This is the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education. It's Wednesday, June 25th, 2014. Mr. Aho, would you please call to roll?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mrs. Kane-Criswell?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Here.
Alright, everybody could please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's obviously summertime, we have a light crowd, thanks for being here tonight. I do not have a specific Board President report because I've been on the soccer field for the last week 24 by 7, so, and watching the World Cup whenever I can. USA is on tomorrow, so watch that, please. Kathy, I would like to turn things over to you, Mrs. Powers, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. It is summer break, but we are not breaking from the action. There is so many things happening in our school district, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that continue to happen even while the students and the staff are away for a couple of months. First of all, we want to congratulate once again the class of 2014. We're so very proud of our graduates and we wish them well as they move on from life at Twinsburg High School into college and careers. Each member of the class of 2014 received a copy of the Senior Send-Off Newsletter, was mailed individually to their homes, and then other members of our community received copies of the Senior Send-Off Newsletter and last week's Twinsburg Bulletin as an insert. Just a bit about that, Board of Education, we actually save money by putting this as an insert into the Twinsburg Bulletin, so instead of us mailing it to each home, we found that this was a much more cost-efficient way of doing things. And I do think that our community appreciated looking up important facts about our graduates and how well they've done, and we're very proud of them. I want to thank Mrs. Tringold and the high school secretaries and the administrators who helped to very quickly put this document together with Mrs. Patty Coslow and myself right after graduation. So we're very delighted that we were able to celebrate with our students and provide them with a little momentum on behalf of the school district. Board of Education, we also have students participating in a summer reading intervention program over at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. This program is called ROR Inter Reading, and it is being funded by the grant that we received from the Department of Education a couple of years ago now, the Ohio Early Literacy and Reading Readiness Grant. We want to thank our parents for investing in their students over the summer and allowing them to participate in our summer reading intervention program. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Farthing and the staff, the teachers, who are here over the next couple of weeks, working with our students and working on particularly with literacy skills. Over at Wilcox Primary School, we had an interesting thing happen last Thursday, even though the teachers were away, Ms. Villa and a group of kindergarten teachers and Mr. Hoffman, our school guidance counselor, made their way over to our neighborhood over in Twinsburg Township, and they delivered to our families reading cards and other educational materials so that our families can continue working with their children over the summer months. I think we surprised a lot of families, we knocked on some doors, and provided a great service to our families over the summer. The parents, I believe, were delighted to receive those educational materials. In fact, when I was at Taste of Twinsburg over the weekend, I had a couple of the parents come up to me and just told me how they were very delighted that we are investing in summer education for their children while they're at home. So we thank Ms. Villa and the staff at Wilcox for providing this very wonderful opportunity for children and their parents to work on literacy skills over the summertime. Over at RBC and Twinsburg High School, the Welcome Center construction is underway. We're very, very pleased with the construction company that we're working with this summer, and they are on time and things are moving along as expected. So we look forward to having those completed in August before the first day of school. And over at Central Office, the administrators are very busy with the interview process. We have a number of positions to be filled because we had so many members of our staff retire at the end of last school year, the 13, 14 school year. So I thank the administrators who are investing sometime, even when they're on summer break, they're actually still here, working to make sure that we attract the very best talent for the classrooms and work in our community here in the Twinsburg City School District. Board of Education, the other thing I wanted to note is, we have a summer edition of our Twinsburg Schools today on Cable 9. This year, we are hosting a show that will be talking about the 10 favorite things that happened at each of our schools. So, again, this summer Logan Powouski is our host of the show, and Matt Zeronik, who is a graduate of Twinsburg High School now many years ago, is, has filmed everything and is now in the process of editing the show. So I invite our community members to take a look at Twinsburg Schools today, our summer edition on Cable 9. I think you'll enjoy just watching a summary of all the good things that happened here this past school year. And finally, I'd like to thank the committee from Taste of Twinsburg. This past Saturday was a wonderful event, chaired by Jen Charlton and a committee of just wonderful people who brought a brand-new idea to our community. And it was so very well-attended, and we're very fortunate that part of those proceeds are going to benefit our Paws on Hunger Program that's already established at Wilcox Primary School and will be expanded to Samuel Bissell Elementary School in the coming year. So we're just delighted about that, and we wish the committee all the gratitude that we can for thinking about our school district and some students that really could use an extra hand, and we thank you for your support of Twinsburg City Schools. Board of Education, this evening, I wanted to present to you for the first time some performance data that we were able to pull together the last couple of days. As you may know, the newspaper has already commented on the great scores at our Bissell School, and I want to remind everybody that this is preliminary test results. So these results, as we have found over the last couple of years, tend to change over time, but as we know as of right now, we're very, very pleased at the results that I'd like to share with you this evening. The results we're going to talk about are the Ohio Achievement Assessments at grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, and the Ohio Graduation Test, which were administered in grades 10, 11, and 12. Again, this presentation this evening is just talking about our achievement scores. We have a lot of work to do to talk about value-added, about gap closing, about AMO, many other parts of the district report card that you will be receiving later this, now it's the fall. But we want to talk to you a little bit tonight about the great performance of our kids, and we're just talking about the achievement of the kids on the report card, the Ohio Achievement Assessment grade, as well as the Ohio Graduation Test grade. Those two are measured by something called Performance Indicator. And this year, the Ohio Department of Education is raising the bar for our kids. For many years, the bar was at 75 percent. This year, the bar raises to 80 percent to consider to be meeting that Performance Indicator, and in grade 11, it remains at 85 percent. So in 3rd grade, these are the preliminary results that we received this past week. In the area of reading, this year, our 3rd graders have a 95.6 percent passage rate, and in mathematics, a 92.4 percent. In reading, you can see that the 3rd grade students actually declined a little bit by 1.4 percent, as last year's score was 97, and in mathematics, we declined by a small amount of .6 percent. Our 4th grade reading score for this year is 96.8 percent, and I'm just delighted that our 4th grade math score, it has made a 10 percent gain from 84.5 percent to 94.8 percent. We're just so ecstatic about that tremendous leap in that score. Our 5th grade scores in reading are at 88.8 percent, in mathematics, 87.5 percent, and 5th grade science made a nice gain from 82.3 percent to 88.2 percent. 6th grade reading has a score of 92.3 percent, and mathematics, a score of 93 percent. In 7th grade, I have to tell you, Mrs. McKinney and the staff really did a tremendous job, as you'll see on these scores. In reading, we've improved from 93.4 percent to 97.2 percent, and mathematics has improved from 87.6 percent to this year, 89.7 percent. And then 8th grade, we have a nice improvement from 92.1 percent to 97.7 percent, in mathematics from 88.3 percent to 93.3 percent, and in science from 79.9 percent to 82.1 percent. Over to Twinsburg High School, these are the 10th grade assessments, and recall, Board of Education, students who don't pass the 10th grade OGT in the past had multiple opportunities to retake the test. In reading, the score from our spring administration was 95.1 percent. Writing is 96.6 percent, that was a nice gain. Math, 90.4 percent. Social Studies, a nice gain from 88.9 to 92 percent, and Science is at 87.3 percent. And then the 11th grade scores in reading, 98.8 percent. In writing, 97.9 percent. Mathematics, 97.9 percent. Social Studies, 97.9 percent, and then Science, 95.1 percent. You can see that the staff at the high school between the 10th grade and the 11th grade, at least in last year's scores comparatively from last year to this year, really have worked hard to improve those scores. And when you're at the 90 percents anywhere, it's very difficult to push even harder than that. So this is a tremendous show of effort by the high school students first and foremost, but also the effort behind the students paid by our student, or rather, our staff, as well as our parents that are helping the students do what they do. So we're delighted that our preliminary data shows that our students have met every goal here as far as the Performance Indicator on our report card. We, at this point, believe we have 100 percent of our Performance Indicators met. That is tremendous, and that's a great effort by everyone who works here and all of the kids who go to school in our school district, those who have been tested this past year. And more great news, according to our reports from this week, our graduation rates are going to glean us an A on the report card for both cohorts, both the four-year graduation class, which is the class of 13, their rating was 96.8 percent, which was an A, and then our five-year cohort, which includes the class of 12, 2012, the rating is 95.1 percent, which also equals an A. So that is tremendous. It is a wonderful mark of the support of our community and the dedication of our families that we're able to say that both of those cohorts have earned the prestigious mark of an A. So we're delighted by that result. Yesterday afternoon, Mrs. Farthing and I participated in a webinar hosted by the Ohio Department of Education, and as was the case last year, the district's report card is changing again in the coming year. We knew that was going to happen, they told us last year. But just a little bit of information about the coming report card, there will be 10 measures on this year's report card, the four-year graduation rate and the five-year graduation rate, and we believe we have As now in both those categories. The Performance Index, we are hopeful that we are going to have a great grade there. As of yesterday, Bissell's score was 110 percent. They just blew the tops off the PI. And what that means, Board of Education, is students can be measured different ways on the test, how well they're performing, and we want all kids to be proficient, but those who are accelerated and advanced add bonus to our point system. And this year, we see that we have a shift at Bissell, and at Dodge, we heard that this morning, so many more students are performing at the accelerated and advanced level, that's pushing our PI up. So, you know, you never know until you actually get the final report card, but from what we saw yesterday and again this morning, we are very hopeful that our PI is going to be very strong moving into the report card when it's released in September. We believe we will have an A for indicators met, based on the information I just presented to you. The annual measurable objectives, the value-added piece, and the new K3 literacy rating are yet to be determined. A lot of information is in our secure data website that Mrs. Farthing is able to access, but she will tell you, it seems on a daily basis, things are changing. The state is determining which students belong to which school districts, where kids are placed. There are students who are exempted from testing, so there's a lot of calculation that goes on behind the scenes here in the summer months, right before the report card is released to our community. So we, at this point, are not certain about anything from annual measurable objective through the value-added piece. The new measure, K3 Literacy, has an interesting calculation, because what they're looking at here is they're looking at the number of students who are placed on reading improvement monitoring plans, the RIMP plans that you heard about so much the last two years, and how many of those students received services, how many students were exited from RIMPs, and what our bottom-line assessment was at the 3rd grade level, how we scored. And we're going to get some kind of a calculated measurement that will be appearing on our report card as our K3 Literacy Rating. So, we're not sure about that, we don't have all the data to be able to even guess what that might look like, but we hear that's coming on the coming report card. Also on this year's report card is something new called Prepared for Success, and that will be based on the four-year cohort at the high school. We will not receive a letter grade this year, however, our percent of participation in each of the following areas will be included on the report card. We're proud of the number of students who receive an honors diploma, so that should not be an issue for us. Industry-recognized credentials, these are students who are participating at CVCC. And so here you begin to see how CVC's progress, or the progress students make as students at CVCC will begin to affect our district report card. So we'll have some information related to that on the coming report card. Remediation free on the ACT and SAT. You know that the State Department of Education has been paying attention to how many students who are freshmen are having to be remediated for reading and math and other skills. Well, this is going to be the measure they're going to include on the report card. How many students, based on an ACT score or an SAT score, will require remediation or not following life at the high school? So that is an important score for us to know. Dual enrollment, the number of kids or the participation rate for dual enrollment, and that will include our PSEO students, and then advanced placement as well, and I believe that is, this year will be a percentage. Moving forward, will be graded on the number of students who earn a 3 or higher on the AP exams. So it'll change over time, this year it will just be a participation rate. The last thing here, Board of Education, International Baccalaureate. As you know, at this point, we do not have an international baccalaureate program in our school district, but as late as this afternoon, Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trappigan and I, and a number of the principals, were talking about doing some research and determining how that will fit into what we do here in our school district. If it's something that we're going to be rated on, we certainly don't want a zero on that report card because we don't have this program in our school district. But it is a very expensive program, and it will require about a year or two of planning before we can launch it. But International Baccalaureate will be the next thing you'll begin to hear about as we engage our teachers in conversation about what that might look like here in our school district. Finally, Board of Education, we just want to thank the students, we want to celebrate their success, because even though we only know part of the story, it is a very exciting story. I want to pause here and let you know that our 3rd grade students have just worked so hard this year, and you know, this is the first year for the 3rd grade reading guarantee, and a lot rides on their success in the area of reading. There were 322 3rd grade students who were assessed this past spring, and the students either had to score a 392 on the OAA, or receive a score of 181 as a RIT score on the MAP Assessment. I'm very, very pleased to inform the Board of Education that as of this afternoon, or last week, we should say, we only have two youngsters who have not met that mark, and so they are now engaged in our tutoring over the summer. They will take the assessment again in July, the OAA assessment, and then they will have an opportunity for additional tutoring in August, late July and August, and we will ask them to take the MAP Assessment one more time in August to see if they can meet that mark of 181. If they do, then they will proceed on to 4th grade like the rest of their peers. If not, the way the law is now written, they will be 4th graders for the sake of 4th graders, but they will not have passed on for reading, so they would be retained in reading, and we will have to make it special accommodations at Dodge so that they are provided intervention in the 3rd grade reading curriculum. So, we're very hopeful, they're working very hard, their parents are behind us, and we're hopeful that we will have 100 percent passage rate as we get underway in the next school year. And finally, we just want to thank our community and our parents for the support. We don't get scores like that because we don't have an involved community. That happens because of the partnership behind our school district with our parents. The passage of the levy provide us financial wherewithal to provide these programs for our students and to continue with the very best resources. So it's a whole community of parents and students and staff and kids that are making this happen, and we're very, very grateful for all of that. So as we move forward, there is so much more to come with regard to scores. I gave Mrs. Farthing the night off because she's been number-crunching the last two days, but we know that there will be an opportunity for you to learn more about value-added and all the rest of the information on the report card. Board of Education, we heard yesterday that the district report card, the one released by the Department of Education, will not be released till mid-September. They're blaming it on the weather. They told us yesterday that because the weather was so awful, some school districts were not able to test according to the schedule, and so the calculation of their students' test results are now being pushed back. So, we won't receive our district report card until sometime mid-September, so we'll have to wait for the actual document to be mailed from the ODE. But in the meantime, we'll keep you up to date as soon as we have information that we can release, that we think with confidence that it's pretty accurate. The worst thing is to release information and then the ODE changes it, and it looks like we don't know what we're doing, but the way it works with the information, they continue to recalculate things. And so, we're confident the Performance Index is a great 100 percent passage, but the rest of the information, we're not quite sure yet. So that's all I have. Any questions?
The ODE is blaming it on the weather, Mrs. Powers?
That's what they said yesterday.
Perhaps they should have taken home some blizzard bags.
I think there was a great number of schools that were pushing 10, 15-some days, you know, that they were having trouble making up, so I think that was a factor, and I think they indicated a delay.
We're just fortunate we were able to have lizard bags, and our test schedule went on as planned.
They don't get snow in Columbus.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Kathy. First, congratulations to you and your staff on great results. I know that, you know, that tends, it seems to be a moving target every single year. So, our ability to perform so well says a lot about the students, and like you said, our staff and the community, so congratulations to everybody. Really impressive. A couple of things, number one, I was wondering if you could comment on that 4th grade math gain of double digits? That was really, I don't think we often see that, so it'd be interesting to hear your insight on that. And then secondarily, you know, there were a lot of measurements that, there's some, obviously, we still don't know the score on, but some we do. Will those combine together to equal one grade, or will they be, do you know if there'll be separate measurements just evaluated, you know, by themselves?
That's a great question. What we heard yesterday during the webinar is the ODE will not be releasing a composite grade for the districts this year. I think, like anything else, just as we are trying to really understand how things are calculated there in the same place, and much like we don't want to release bad information, neither do they. So, we were told yesterday, although there was supposed to be a composite grade released on the report card, they're pausing for another year to try to get things organized down in Columbus. As far as the 10 percent gain in reading, I have to just say, that's a commitment to data. We were talking with Mrs. Wurzler and Mr. Hyman and Mr. Holland this afternoon in our CIP meeting, and they use the MAP data, and I know the kids were tested a lot this year, and we're looking at that, but they use the diagnostic data at the beginning of the year, they use the information coming from the Bissell Building and the information the teachers sent forward, and they just drilled down, and they were providing to the students exactly what they needed as far as instruction goes. So we are just delighted, you know, we adopted Go Math a year ago, that probably has something to do with it, but really, what Mrs. Wurzler and her administrative team said to us this afternoon was, it's really about paying attention to the data. And they told us a success story of one of the teachers who really has struggled over the years with student success, and this teacher had their data binder with them everywhere they went and just kept talking about the work, and they believe, and I think he came as one of the top-performing teachers now at that building, and it's because he's paying attention to the numbers. And I think that's the lesson that we're learning as a district, is you really have to pay attention to the performance information of our children and make instructional changes to meet where they are.
And just one last comment, too, you know, again, just kudos to the group, everybody who's worked on that 3rd grade rating guarantee. I know it's just, it seems like we've been sweating bullets trying to make sure that...
That's Mrs. Johnson's leadership. She has been, again, another person talking about the data and making sure things are in place for her staff, and Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trappigan being great partners. The other thing I want to mention is, the two ladies here sitting here, Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trappigan, it used to be that special education and regular education were in the silos by themselves. These two directors have worked diligently to break down those silos, and when you see one, you probably see the other one close by, and when one is adopting something, they're making sure the other group of teachers has what they need, and I think that's really going to start to pay dividends for us. We don't know what the value-added scores for our subgroups, and we don't know the AMO information yet, but I have to wager to guess that that is making a tremendous difference for what's happening in our classrooms.
Kathy, you've talked with the board a lot over the years about data, and, you know, that was one of the things that was a strength when we went through the interview process and brought you to Twinsburg, was your data-driven process to use data in an appropriate way. I was just wondering if you could expound upon that a little bit as to whether or not the data is directing you towards specific students, so that you know that these are the students because of these numbers or these scores, and/or is it also that the numbers are driving you to focus on specific areas? And can you just talk a little bit about that, and how that data drives you into those areas?
I think it's a little bit of both, actually has to be both. Again, back to all of the assessments that our students have completed this year, from MAP assessments to OAA to OGT, to SLO, Student Growth Measures. This year, we started the year by saying that our motto is going to be "Know Every Child's Story," and we challenged our teachers to know everybody's, every child's story. And what that means is, what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, what are they coming to school with as far as background and ability and resources and support? And how do we, as a school district, take that information and be able to make instructional changes based on what each little person or each high school student is bringing with them to the desk in the classroom? So, it really is, kudos to the staff. They really took that slogan and they ran with it, and teachers have, you know, these student learning objectives, they know where students are, they've tested them, they understand what they need, and they've made instructional changes, and they've just done a tremendous job. A lot of that was driven by OTES, the new evaluation method, but I have to say, beyond the OTES model, in conversations this year with our staff, the collegial conversations that have been going on at any of our schools have been raised now to such a double because they're talking about the work. They're talking about knowing about each child's story, and they're talking about the work that they have to do to make sure that things are happening appropriately in the classrooms. Very proud of the staff here, they have done tremendous work this year. They're very tired, they went on break, they're just exhausted, but I think they can feel very proud, especially when we start getting results like this, that they're doing very good work.
So we'll have a more thorough report then in September, when the ODE releases the rest of the data, then?
Mrs. Farthing will be doing the next report. Yes, very in-depth. And once we have data that's much more, we're more confident that it's not going to move.
Right, okay.
But because the scores were strong in all those areas, we felt confident that it was okay to release that today. And we've received phone calls from the media, so they have the same data.
Any other comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Anything else under your reports tonight, Mrs. Powers?
No, but Mr. Stuber, we would be remiss if we didn't talk a little bit about the track kids that were in North Carolina or South Carolina.
Why don't we bridge right out of the superintendent's report into committees, and you can just take the ball and run with it there?
Well, I think that it's most appropriate for the Board President or Mrs. Torel Waldron, who sits on the Athletic Council, to talk a little bit, brag a little bit about our kids, that we're representing not only our school district, but Ohio in the national competition.
Yeah, I'll talk about one piece of it, because there's one particular race that's a favorite of mine, and that's the 4x800, and that was the particular event that I ran when I was in high school. Not quite as fast as these young men. These four gentlemen, let me get it straight, Nick Shank, Josh Grogan, Matt Andrews, and Garrett Kritzlo. They had the second-fastest 4x800 time in the state going into the state meet. They had an off day, and they finished 10th, but they still made it to the state meet, and I know they wanted to be a little bit higher than that, but then they had the invitation to the national meet in Greensboro, North Carolina, and I actually had the opportunity to go back and forth a little bit with Coach Komet and even some of the parents, and, you know, I know they wanted to go a little bit faster, but by golly, they went to the national meet, and that's just something that, you know, not too many people do. There were other athletes that were down in Columbus, we had some other young men and other young women, and some of their names escaped me, I apologize. I don't know, Kathy, if any, this is right off the top of your head, but we had other events, other runners, and I think high jumper, right?
Yes, Sam Monacino.
There we go, okay. So, but to have, when I look at it, that many athletes go to Columbus and participate in a state meet, and, you know, when I grew up, you didn't even talk about that, you know, you were lucky if you made it, the districts are beyond, so I think it's just awesome, and, like I said, for me, it was kind of fun because I was following the 4x18 this year, so. Did you want to add anything to that, anything that you know about those guys?
No, just, I know they did an exceptional job representing our schools, and it's not just about how they handle themselves on the just about how they handle themselves on the, out on the field or in the track, but I know they also represent us respectfully as representation of our schools. So I just wanted to congratulate all of them as well.
Yeah, great. Great, okay. In committee reports, I think we have some policy stuff, so I'll let you guys go first.
Some, some policy stuff is, is an understatement. For those that have their agenda, I would draw your attention to action items J5 and quite a few numbers there. I'm just going to kind of give the highlights of what changes. Before I do that, I just want to explain, you know, like architects and other professional consultants, we have a relationship with Neola of Ohio. There's no possible way with everything that goes on district that they can be up on everything in Columbus and all the legislative changes and language changes. And there are umpteen districts, you know, around the state that participate with this, the same type of service. So we get things like this for the TV cameras. And there's a lot of numbers here, but I just, you know, I thought I'd really highlight, and I'm going to ask my, my board colleague Tina to, to chime in as, as well. The policy committee met on the 24th, is that Tuesday? And that was just yesterday, my. And, you know, so you might see, starting with item 1220, administrative item, employment of the superintendent. And again, a lot of these changes are either legal or language changes being recommended throughout the state. They may, some might have to do with revised codes, some are, in this case, two highlights. One is, is some additional language on protected classes, which I'm sure anybody in both private and public sector has seen in employment law. And also an option when a district is employing a superintendent to look at potentially if you have a candidate that, that really is, is scoring high and, but may not have the, the current type of license that most superintendents have, there's an alternate for a two-year alternative license waiver that can be attained from the state. And that's in 1220. In 1310, employment of the treasurer, again, just some, some basic language cleanup there, simple things from, from being overseen to, you know, being responsible for the treasury, that's language for the treasury themselves. And I think that was appropriate language that removes some of the burden from the treasury and puts it on the entire administration and board, you know, for the district's finance. The other thing was what types of committees and people that would be formed should, should we need to hire? And the language that was added was really an additional committee, a board selected, individuals should, the board choose at that time, they would want that committee, it could be professionals, constituents from the community, and we thought that was important. A lot of the next ones, and, and there's going to be a couple that you see FMLA and anti-harassment several times, and the reason you're seeing this several times is oftentimes it's both at the administrative level, at the professional level, and the classified level. So I'm not going to repeat each time we go there, you know, because my board colleagues will throw things at me. But, so we have FMLA in 1630.01, anti-harassment in 1662. The biggest change that, that we made is because of the, the heightened protected classes and things that can happen on harassment and bullying, we did have one compliance officer listed, and that was a female, and we thought it would be prudent to also have a male as a compliance officer to balance the scales. So that's, that's probably just, you know, one of the biggest changes all the way through and why you're seeing this language.
And in addition to that, it's...
Yes, please.
There's no cost to the district, it's just somebody who's available.
Right. It's, it's by law, you have to have, have someone on, on file as the compliance officer, and so now we have both a male and a female available. And that is when, you know, through the complaint process. Moving to 2271, our post-secondary enrollment programs policy was just being aligned with college requirements and meaning that it's the college that is accepting the student, if I'm not mistaken. And the students that are electing post-secondary enrollment options are actually enrolling in college. They are, you know, an actual student, so they have to align by the college requirements. Preschool program is probably the most in-depth and the newest addition to that. And I don't know if you want, Mrs. Powers, if you want to expand on that a little bit because this is a completely new addition to our policy. And I, from what I understand, it wasn't something that we had previously, but it was being recommended in a recent audit.
Right. We, we obviously have a very strong preschool, but one of the things that we recognize this year is the fact that we had no policy to support what happens over there and how we educate our young tigers. And so working with Neola, they were provide, they provided for us the draft, and the Board of Education Subcommittee had a chance to take a look at the draft, and that happened after Mrs. Trappigan and Ms. Villa took paper to pen and, or pen to paper rather, and made some, made some revisions that make it our policy rather than just a vanilla policy. So we're, we're pleased that that is on the agenda this evening. We should have a policy for all of our programs, and so this just makes that right.
And again, we weren't flying blind, there was handbook language and such like there is for all of our, our buildings. So a lot of the, the language in that policy is being drafted from, from the handbook. Moving on, again, I, what I failed to mention in J5 through all this, this is just the first reading, so there will be a second reading of, of all these. But continuing on, and I promised my colleagues to, to speed this across. 2430, district-sponsored clubs and activities. We're just circling back to previous policy that was adopted, I believe, about two months ago regarding grade points. The addition that you're going to see in both this and activities is a state mandated concussion language that all of our coaches and players are becoming very familiar with. 3120, professional staff, employment of professional staff. This is a situation where if there was a superintendent nomination for staff that could not be made due to a relative, sibling, or, or direct relationship, this language now provides for an alternative district administrator to make that nomination. In 3120, reduction of staff, this is an area where we, we really need to align very carefully with our agreed-upon contracts. And this is some language that just really reflects seniority situations and, and really what just happens in those situations when you're dealing with employees with identical evaluations. Should they, you know, again, with the new OTES, which is the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System or the Administrative Evaluation System, if those evaluations were identical, this is about the only time where seniority, and I believe Ohio Revised Code has removed any other reference to seniority except in this, is that correct?
Right. And this, actually, this policy was scrutinized by our OTES District Committee a year ago, and it is now being made right in policy through the addition of the language that says that this policy is in alignment with a master agreement between the board and the Twinsbury Education Association. This new, new phenomenon called comparable, comparable teachers is actually defined in the negotiated contract with the TEA, but this then does address what happens if we were to have a reduction in staff. When we reduced staff two years ago, that was based solely on seniority and a teacher's license area. And now this kind of gives us a different direction, and this is also mirrored in the teacher's negotiated contract with the board.
So a stronger policy when we are in alignment with, with our union.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask, is how that was connected with the agreement, and you just answered it. So, thank you.
Again, as I mentioned earlier, 3362, 3430.01, you're seeing the same thing, anti-harassment, FMLA and so forth through classified staff. Basically the same language, it just has to be written in a policy because these are different administrative sections of, of our policy. 5111, students, this has to do with eligibility of, of residents and non-residents, and a lot of this language, again, is aligning with code with respect to, to grandparents and power of attorneys and such. And so that's the, the changes there. 5310, health services, that has to do with, again, the concussion language. And as we turn the page, it's a shorter list now. 5340, against student accidents, again, language updates on concussions. 5513, care of school property, this really just provides the, the ability to enforce our policies within the extent of the law. And that's aligning with statutes should there be anything done to harm school property. Again, you're seeing anti-harassment, bullying and such. And with respect to 6152, finances, student fees, fines and charges, there are many protected classes, especially our IEP and 504 students. And in this situation where you normally could withhold grades and materials for non-payment of fines, you're not allowed to do that with these categories. And this is, you know, again, code. And so this just says that, you know, we cannot withdraw, if somebody was moving from our district to another district and happened to be on a 504 plan, we cannot withhold grades based on, simply based on fines. And that's what you happen to see quite a bit with, with these categories. Let's see, a couple other changes, 7300, disposition of real property. This really just goes to how the funds from the sale of, of real property, they have to go towards the debt assigned to that property if any, you know, before the, the funds can be distributed differently. And this language just tightens up what can and cannot be done with those funds. And then the most interesting one, since we were talking about contracts earlier, 8210 on the school calendar, many of you may have heard that the state is going to an hours-based program instead of school days. Not that we've all got to love our blizzard bags, and blizzard bags may not be going away, but the point here is that we are aligning our policy with that change, with the, the notation that districts that currently have negotiated contracts, this will not take place in, in our case for the 2014, 15 school year. And, but then all districts after they're either out of contract or into new contracts will be moved out. So there may be districts that you're going to hear on the hour system, and you're going to hear probably, I, I've heard it's not going to snow next year, so, you know, that's, you know, from, from my microphone to, to our school calendar. But that's, the changes there are really just getting ahead of that, so we have that, that policy in place when we negotiate new contracts, so. Miss Davis, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
I almost couldn't read my, yeah, so there's a lot there. I would mention again, it is first reading.
Yes.
All these policies are online at the district website, under board, under committees. You can actually drill down by section 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, should you want to read all these, all these policies. So, any questions from my colleagues?
Rob, it's quite a list this time, and I appreciate the summary. I just have to ask, was this one, two, or three policy meetings that it took you to get through all?
This was one policy meeting. I, I would commend Mrs. Powers on giving us, I'll hold up our stack again. We received this a good three, four weeks, so we had plenty of time to read over, understand, ask our questions. But we still had questions and, and went through each policy. Each one of these, you know, is a lot of language. And we're provided with both, the current language that I mentioned exists on our website now, and a lot of this, I may point out, there's my, my yellow sheets. We get an overview from, I mentioned, Neola of Ohio, and, and this is a lot of the recommended changes. They're sometimes giving you options, here's what, like districts are doing, you can pick this option, this option, or this option. And, and it's, it's oftentimes it's minutia, but sometimes it's what works best with our district. But these, again, is recommended language, we don't have to accept it, you know, on, on face value, but this is, you know, quite a lot of legal work that people are doing behind the scenes and with Columbus and, and providing these updates. I would caution that these are changing all the time. So you won't hear from policy once, you know, once a year, you're going to hear from policy several times a year because this language is, is constantly being updated, and we are then trying to align our policies and adjust.
I think, Rob, you, you hit a very important point, that the policy committee, the work that you guys do is you first have to understand what the, the language in the policy is and how the, the law or whatever it is that's affecting that policy is changing it. And then, to your point, there's options.
Right.
You know, you can choose this language, this language, or this language to accomplish what the law is suggesting, not suggesting, telling us to do. But then you get to fit that language to what the district needs are. So I know you guys, you know, first it's just an understanding, and then it's kind of a decision about which language fits best. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing on that.
You know, we do have good resources. Again, these are the, in a sense, the laws of the district, but there's a whole nother set of administrative guidelines that the administration uses. This is just what needs to be done. How, we're not here to say, you know, this is how it's done, that's, that's what, what you get to do. And there's all kinds of policies that match this for all, all of our employees. And it's, it's quite detailed, but I think it's, it's how a well-run district operates.
Great. Thank you.
If I could just comment is in regard to the school calendar, the reason it's important for the board to take action early is we'll be bargaining the teacher's contract in the spring of next year, if not the late, late part of winter. And when you bargain the contract, that is the point at which you change from days to hours. So it's important that there be guidance provided by the board so that we can use that guidance to determine how we're going to move forward with the, the teachers' union. The other part, I just want to bring forward to the board, Mr. Felber mentioned the blizzard bags, everybody's favorite thing, but it saved the district, and I'm really glad that we invested the time to put those up on the website. Where we are with that for next year at this point is I've requested of Mrs. Sutter Riley, the president of TEA, to provide support verbally to me so that I can write the proposal. And she was going to do the work of talking with her executive committee the next week or so. It is our intention, if TEA is interested in moving forward, and it has to be a partnership between the board and the TEA, a written agreement that's signed and then submitted to the Department of Education. If the TEA leadership is behind the moving forward, I will present to you on July 16th the proposal for your hopeful approval so that we can get our proposal to the ODE. It must be submitted to the ODE by August 1st this year in order to be able to move forward using blizzard bags. So we're, we're waiting to hear from Mrs. Sutter Riley as to a direction from the teachers, and once I have that, we'll be able to move forward in preparing that proposal. So that's where we are with that.
Maybe just an additional comment on that. I know we're all trying to forget our frigid nights. This past year and the, the changes that the governor made were unique and temporary. And if the, you know, in our opinion, if the majority of districts are switching to hours, I would not expect the same kind of variance whereby they authorize districts to use blizzard bags. That may not happen past August 1st. So it behooves us to really get this in place and be done so that we can go into school year and, and hopefully we won't have calamity days. But, you know, every indication is we wouldn't see that same type of, of grace period or change. And we all know how long it took for them to just agree on, on four more days and what the days would be, and I think we were waiting nearly a month. And I believe as a, as a painful reminder, we employed blizzard bags because they had yet to make a decision. I think we made somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to 10 days before they made their final decision that still did not afford us any, any relief because we had, we were just at...
Six.
Six days, and you had to have used everything, you know, before you can even use additional days. So my caution to the, the viewers is, you know, don't expect that same kind of relief from the state again. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we can have a, a very quick agreement between the administration and the TEA regarding blizzard bags so that the lessons can be prepared and we have it in place. And I'd rather have it in place and not worry about trying to scramble.
Agreed. And I think Mrs. Sutter Riley is just doing her due diligence and pulling the people on her executive committee to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
The agreement came together very quickly last time, but for those to recall, we still had to have the agreement before the application, go down to the state and then approve blizzard bags. So again, we're probably not going to get that same kind of variance that all the other districts were scrambling to do at the same time.
Okay. Anything else on policies?
That's enough.
Good job, Rob. Yes, very good job. I know that was a lot of work. You guys did a good job on that.
Other committees, Kathy, anything?
For Buildings and Grounds, I just wanted to commend Mrs. Powers and the Buildings and Grounds staff for, we were able to look at some of the landscaping, and they are doing a tremendous job of taking care of that. So I saw up at the high school, they've done quite a bit of work. And we're just always improving on things, and I know that Mrs. Powers takes great pride in the appearance of our school. So I, as it's progressing, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of positive things happening, so thank you so much for taking care of that. And then, as I was looking at the flowerbeds, I saw all of the work that they're doing on the welcome centers, and it's really coming along nicely, new concrete. So I'm very excited to see all this positive movement going forward. So I foresee, at the start of school, we should have some really nice-looking landscaping, our entrances should be good with new concrete, and the welcome centers look like they're going to be on time. So that's great. Thank you.
Kathy, anything? Okay, if we don't have any other committees, we will go back then to administrative reports. I know, Mrs. Powers, before I go to Mr. Aho, did you have anything else under administrative reports?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Aho, I'll turn things over to you.
All right, thank you. Just one second while we get our slides up. I have a few different PowerPoints uploaded up, ready to go. I have a few different PowerPoints uploaded up, ready to go.
Yeah, so I think just as an intro, a couple of meetings ago, we actually approved the five-year forecast that you put out for the end of the, almost the end of the year. And you've provided an update to the board, but because we were not able to be here in the government center, because they were doing renovations out here, we asked you to present this presentation again so that we would actually have it for the public to see on TV. So, the mic is yours.
All righty. As you know, we do the, you know, the five-year forecast is done in October, then it's updated in the spring. So that's already been done. It's, you know, been filed with the ODE. It's on the ODE website. You can, you know, you can see our five-year forecast on the ODE website. You can go there, you can actually see any school district's five-year forecast. So you just log on to the ODE's website, you know, and you can type in forecast or whatever in the search box, and that'll come up. You can do it by county or by, you know, specific school district. So you can see what everybody else is doing. So you get an idea of what, you know, how to compare. You know, how do we compare to other schools? You know, and, you know, you're not looking at one piece of information. You can gather some additional information to see how we compare. One of the things with the five-year forecast, it's designed really to provide the Board of Education, the administration, and the public a general indication of the probable future financial position of the school district based on information currently available to the school district. It's kind of a barometer kind of idea. It's going to show you like, you know, are we looking in good shape right now? Or, you know, are there pressures? Is it going to be stormy? You know, how does it look? You know, is, you know, and that's kind of all financial, you know, the financial look. You know, is it, right now, we're kind of fair, we're doing all right. You know, we passed the levy, so we're going to be good in the next couple of years. And the one thing with the forecast, it is a living document. You know, some of the big Wall Street companies, Intel, Goldman Sachs, they go and they put their forecasts out, and they have to revise those also. You know, Intel, you know, missed on some of their predictions. PC market was down for, and then had to go and re-update their forecast. So it's something that everybody in business does, and every school district, and, you know, everybody in the state has to do it in the country. Here's kind of what the five-year forecast looks like. I'm sure, I know you can't read it, but one of the things that it does also do is it provides awareness and conversations about the allocation of resources. If you don't know where you're going, you know, you don't have a plan. So what this does is allows the district to plan. You know, our, you know, what are our financial goals? How do we fit those financial goals in with our educational goals? And it's kind of a balancing act. You want to get, you know, the best bang for your buck you can. And this provides some of the tools to facilitate those discussions. One of the things that we do pride ourselves on is, I think we've been physically responsible. That's been a district goal for many, many years, is our fiscal responsibility. One of the things that we're pretty proud of is Twinsburg, our per pupil expenditure is $9,452, which is less than the state average of $10,446, less than similar districts. And then you can also see it's less than a lot of our neighboring school districts. So I think that's a good measure of how we're doing. You know, it does show that we're really watching our expenditures and minding them as best we can. One of the things that we struggle with on the five-year forecast, and this has been something that's going on for quite a few years, is the phase-out of the tangible personal property tax. Back in 2004, we were about $9.8 million. Well, that's since gone away, about $5,000 last year out of that. But the state said that they would reimburse us for a short time and then phase that out. Well, in 2013, that $9.8 million looked more like $6.2 million. So there is a reduction in net revenues of about $3.6 million, as you can see on this slide. So looking at the cat tax plus the tangible personal property tax, you can see that reduction The chart shows the reduction of the $3.6 million. You know, you just think about it in the number of teachers that would cover, that would be a substantial amount of teachers. You know, when you add that all up with the third-grade reading guarantees and all the testing and stuff that's, you know, out there, you know, it makes a big difference. One of the things you think about too, the state has eliminated a tax that was once under local control, which was the tangible personal property tax that was collected through Summit County. They've substituted it with a state-controlled commercial activity tax. So now the state has those dollars in their hands, and they do what they want to do to some degree with those. They've been phasing it out, and the state's been using those dollars in their funding. So really, if you think about it, the state has redirected local dollars to backfill their coffers. So the state's able to balance their budget on the backs of the local taxpayers. You know, what the state says, we can reduce your income tax, well, they're not telling the whole story because they, you know, take it from one hand, and you got to give it out with the other hand. So the state looks like a hero, but they're really making rules that are not beneficial in the long run. Since September of 2010, the state has passed four school funding models, SF3, PAS, Bridge, and the current one. And there's also been four different iterations of the phase-out calculation. They keep changing all this stuff. This is just one of the things, I was thinking, as they were talking about all the assessments, at how this has changed four times for me, but the assessments, the OAAs and OGTs and all that, this changed like every year. They're always changing. It's like, I thought I had it pretty bad, but I couldn't imagine having to chase around those kind of, you know, goals that change every year like that. It's just, it's amazing. Another thing that we have to struggle with to some degree is household 920. That caps the amount of tax revenue a district receives. And what that does is, when a levy's voted in, that's the amount of money you get. Whether the, you know, the property values go up or down, doesn't matter, that's what's going to be collected. So over the years, as property values have gone up, they reduce the amount of millage. So back in 1985, we had approximately 39 operating mills. Well, as the reduction factors and all that have taken place over the years, we're at about 35 effective mills right now. So all the reduction factors pushed down, and we're actually collecting less millage now than we did back in 1985. Another thing that pops up was like the casino revenue. Oh, it's going to be a big deal. Well, it's not really all that big deal. It helps, every penny we can get, you know, we're appreciative of it, but, you know, it's no big, big deal on a $40 million budget. Last year, we received $90,000, and this year it's been $217. Well, you know, it's welcome, but, you know, it's not going to solve anybody's problems. Another thing that we have to deal with too, that's, you know, is kind of a, something you can't always predict, is the redirection of state funding to charter schools, electronic schools. There's Peterson deductions, there's autism deductions, and then there's direct payments for outplace students. These have jumped 275% from approximately $400,000 in fiscal year '09 to $1.1 million in fiscal year '13. A big jump. You know, how do you predict something like that? So, you know, as all you, you know, as you're looking at the forecast and, you know, the numbers change, you know, and these are some of the reasons why. One of the things that we try to do is, everybody's forecast, if you put the model up and you plug it into this chart, is going to look pretty much the same. So what you really want to, you know, struggle to do is you're trying to push that red line out. You can see this was the one from like 2010 here. Kind of looks pretty similar to the one from 2014, expenditures and revenues. But this is our main goal, that line right there where this fund balance crosses the, you know, goes negative. You want to keep pushing that line out. So you have to find ways to, you know, to reduce your expenditures if you can, or increase revenues. So there has to be some way to keep pushing that line out. So we look for ways to, you know, for shared services, we do cooperative purchasing. Our health care is through a consortium. A lot of our insurance, we do our bus purchases that we just did not too long ago, we've authorized those. Those are through consortiums. So we do a lot of our purchasing through consortiums. Our energy comes through consortiums for electric and natural gas. So we do make, you know, use of those consortiums, and they do, make a big difference. You know, here's another, just talking earlier about, you know, going on the ODE website, and you can look at other school districts' five-year forecasts. Well, here's Stolen's five-year forecast, and it kind of looks the same. They're building a fund balance, they have a fairly large, you know, fund balance over the course of the, you know, this five-year forecast. But then it'll start to, you know, go down also. So it's tracking pretty much like ours, they're just in a little different, you know, they're pushing their line a little farther out. You know, so like I said, go to the ODE website, look at different schools, and you can see, you know, they're all pretty much the same format. You know, it's that, the expenditures, the revenues, and then there's the fund balance that eventually, you know, starts to approach zero. Looking back too, and we passed our 4.9-mill levy, the operational change plan, and kind of what that did for the district. You know, you look at the five-year forecast right now, and it looks pretty good. We're good through, you know, 2018. We have a nice fund balance moving forward. But what would have happened if that levy had not passed? You can see there's red numbers on the bottom. And then in 2017, we would have had a $10 million, $11 million deficit. And that's when the state comes in, and basically the state would be here in like 2016 knocking on our door. So, you know, it's a big difference. The operational change plan, the 4.9-mill levy made a big difference, and we were able to push that line out farther through those efforts. You know, some of the concerns, you know, moving forward with the five-year forecast, you know, that there's other pressures that are getting put on the expenditure side. The third-grade reading guarantee, you know, you're thinking about like, you know, we're a service organization, you have to service the students, you know, so how are all these things going to happen? You need people to, you know, to facilitate these, you know, the third-grade reading guarantee, the student learning objectives. We have new assessments coming online, Park Common Core. You know, and also too, we've talked about the academic opportunities, you know, study tables at the high school, trying, and that for like the athletes and the other kids that are struggling and kind of falling between the cracks a little bit, and how to get their motivation and grades up. AP courses, dual credits, PSEO, you know, those kind of things are out there that people are looking at, and, you know, it all takes resources. EOTAS teacher evaluations, that's extra resources to go through those. Those are very time-consuming and take a lot of time and effort from our administrators. Special Ed, there's challenges there. And then the community school deductions, those are, you know, kids going out to other schools. We don't have a huge draw on that, but it's still, it's out there. And then, you know, what happens is, as the revenues are squeezed and there's expenditures that are, some of the other opportunities, you know, the non-core opportunities shrink. So there's just, you know, you have to balance all this stuff out, and, you know, we're in the education business, so to speak. So, you know, it's our main focus, and we try to do as best we can. But, you know, you got to do with, you know, what you have. You got to keep a balance between the community and the schools and what we can do moving forward. You know, one of the things, the five-year forecast that kind of have had conversations around, one of the things that when you build the five-year forecast that is part of governmental accounting, are encumbrances and open purchase orders. Before anybody buys anything, they have to have a purchase order drawn up. And what the purchase order basically does is it takes that money and it holds that money until the purchase is made. So that you know that the money's there, and you're not going to have expenditures going out for, you know, a bunch of items and not have the money set aside. So basically, the purchase order sets the money aside. So when we build our five-year forecast, the encumbrances are in those numbers. Basically, it's kind of like working capital kind of idea. You need some money set aside in those numbers for the open purchase orders that, you know, move from year to year and cross different timeframes. You know, personal services are a big part of what we do. You know, we're a people, you know, service organization, and we have teachers and staff, and, you know, and we have to, you know, that's where our big emphasis is on, you know, hiring the teachers to teach the kids. Healthcare and benefits is also a large part of it. You know, we are in a consortium. Sometimes you have good years through the consortium. There's over 10,000 lives in this consortium, it's a big consortium. So from time to time, they have a good year, and they'll give us premium holidays. So they'll be, you know, the consortium is self-funded, and so if they overestimate for the one year, and there's not a lot of claims, then they'll give us a rebate on our premiums for a month or two. One year is actually three months a week, we got premium holidays, which is nice. Something that's out there right now too, don't know where, you know, that's going to eventually wind up, is the Affordable Care Act. You know, we've been in conversations with our consortium and that, so we're kind of okay with that. But you never know if something's going to, you know, pop up like, oh, you've got more work to do on this healthcare issue. And other things in there are, you know, purchase services, tuition, utilities, nursing services, supplies and materials, and debt service. One of the things in the debt service is when we did the House Bill 264 project at the high school, there were some federally subsidized bonds, they're called qualified school construction bonds. The federal government basically reimbursed almost the entire cost of the interest on that. Well, over time, with their sequestration-ish kind of stuff going on in the federal government, they've kind of rolled that back a little bit. So instead of it being, and then we have to pay bodily, just almost a percentage, like almost 1% now on those. Where before, it was fairly taxed, it was almost nothing that we had to pay on the interest. So that's the five-year forecast. On the ODE's website, you know, there is the forecast, there's also the notes to the forecast, which is good reading, I think. But anyway.
Define good reading.
I'm not sure you're going to get everybody to agree with that one.
Very suspenseful.
There's some policies that, if you're really bored.
So anyway, the five-year forecast there, and, you know, one of the things I liked, I always like, I kind of like the slide here, is with really the five-year forecast, you know, it's not a straight shot, you know, down the road. You're not going to get to where the numbers are in five years. It's a windy road, you've got to be careful. You know, there's going to be impediments in the way and dangers in the way that you have to steer around. If you don't steer around them, you know, you'll wind up like the Costa Concordia did several years ago, and you'll hit the rocks and crash. We don't want to do that, and that's basically my job, is to make sure that that boat doesn't run aground and we don't run out of money. So, that's the five-year forecast then, so.
I have a few comments, not as much questions, I think, just to kind of provide a little color commentary coming from the guy who's been saddled up next to you for the last seven years. I just want to highlight that the five-year forecast is a conservative, living document. It's conservative by nature, and it's a planning tool used by the board. We recognize it's conservative, we take that into consideration when we look at it. One of the things I think we see on the agenda tonight that ties into this is the appropriations. And if you were not conservative and you were trying to be just a little bit tighter, and then something happened in the middle of the year, you would have to go back and refile appropriations documents. So, to some degree, what you're trying to do is save some of that extra work during the year. So we recognize that it's conservative by nature, and it's just something we understand. I think the other thing is that, you know, there's a healthy cash reserve there today, and we need to highlight that, that the district is in good financial condition at the moment. You know, we're going to run for a while, and I think at the end of this year, we might even end in the black rather than in the red, which is a good thing. And there's a lot of things that have contributed to that, both some prudent spending decisions as well as the renewal levy, which, you know, gets taken back up to the top line on the forecast. But if I go back to when I joined on the board, that five-year forecast, even if you took the conservative part of it out, we would have run out of cash reserve by now. It would be gone if we had sat on our hands as a board. So it's a living document. It gives us some idea of what the future is, it tells us when we should be taking certain actions. And in the time that I've been on the board, those actions did include quite a bit of change. And the biggest one was the operational change plan, but there were actually changes that we took before that. There were positions where people left, and Kate, you remember, we did not rehire for some of those resignations and retirements, and through attrition, we reduced some of the budget. And then in the 2010 forecast, it said we would have been zero last year. So even if you, again, take the conservative nature out of that document, then maybe it goes out a year, and we'd be zero today. And again, that goes back to if the board and the administration sits on their hands and does nothing to change, and does nothing to look at that document and say, we need to affect change, then that'll come true. So we don't want that to come true, and we have to make decisions So we don't want that to come true, and we have to make decisions that affect that. I think one of the big highlights, and Mr. Andrews and I talked about this last year when we had a finance committee meeting that was a real big shocker for all of us, but just the change and the redirection of funds, you know, especially in some of the special ed areas, 400,000 to now over 1.1 million dollars, and that's not something that we have a lot of control over. You know, the state mandates where we have to spend some of that money, and in some cases, it's just not something that we can have much control over, and I know Mrs. Powers and your staff and Mr. Aho, you guys look at how those dollars are spent, and, you know, can we do better if we hire staff and have some of those services brought here versus contracting out? So we're constantly looking at how we can affect those things. Another thing at a very, very high level is the difference between a city and a school district. And some people, you know, try to compare us, and we're just not the same. The city is primarily dependent upon income tax, and when the economy goes up and down, that income tax can fluctuate quite a bit, you know, so when the economy's going well, the income tax goes up, and we saw a year ago that, you know, we were able to repeal that quarter percent on that income tax for the city of Twinsburg. That was because when things get better, they can see an improvement in their revenue stream. That's not how school districts work across the state. School districts are dependent upon property taxes, and property taxes fluctuate a little bit in valuation, but not to the, not anywhere near the same degree that income tax does. And if you go back to the 1970s, when House Bill 920 was passed, that puts a cap on many, not all, but most of the tax levies are actually capped, and if you build new homes, it's not like those new homes bring in new tax levy. They might bring in more children to the district to educate, but the amount of taxes for that levy just gets spread out amongst those homes. So our revenue generally, from a school district perspective, stays pretty flat. So on one end, you've got House Bill 920 that you brought up, keeps the revenues mostly flat, and then House Bill 66 from back in 2005, I think is when it was passed, that eliminates the tangible personal property tax. So on one hand, they're capping certain revenue, and on the other hand, they're reducing other revenue. So those have been the things that have been highlights of what I have paid attention to as a board member over the years, and I just wanted to bring those out because that has a significant effect on the five-year forecast, so. I don't have anything else, does anybody, if somebody wants to talk about the dollars and the things?
I thought it was a great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Mr. Aho, thank you very much for doing this, and I know this is, what, the third time that we've asked you to present this, and I appreciate that.
Encore.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the administrative reports, we have a report, I believe, Mrs. Powers, from Mr. Masalona. I don't know if you want to do an intro, but I'll pair it up, over to you.
Well, he's passing out a copy of the PowerPoint to our board this evening. If you've been paying attention to the OHSAA, the Ohio High School Athletic Association, the last, I'd say the last two or three years, there has been a big conversation going on about competitive balance, and what does that mean, and how do you figure that out? And just about a month ago, the OHSAA has made some determinations regarding competitive balance. Lots of conversations that Mr. Masalona and Mrs. Dringo have been intimately involved in at the state level regarding this, and I thought, because the media is covering this to a pretty good degree, I thought it might be a good idea to provide our community with the Twinsburg aspect or our perspective regarding competitive balance. So, welcome, Mark, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you, Board of Education, Mrs. Powers and Mr. Aho. As Mrs. Powers said, this has been in discussion for a while. The concerns of competitive balance have been around for years, and they first started to be taken seriously about five, six, seven years ago, to where the public schools and the private schools felt that there wasn't an even playing field, that private schools had an advantage, I mean, being able to recruit and bring students in, maybe from other private schools, but basically from public schools. And was that slanting the playing field in tournaments and giving the private schools an unfair advantage? So what they did is they formed committees, there had been two previous votes in years past that failed, I don't think that people took them real seriously. For a lot of schools and school districts and high schools, they felt comfortable with where they were at. They thought they were competitive and didn't worry about it. This time, the OHSAA made a very strong push, saying that there could be a split in tournaments, that private schools will have their own tournament, and public schools will have their own tournament. And that scared a lot of people, and this vote was taken a lot more seriously this time, and it did pass that there will be a new competitive balance plan, and there won't be a split in the tournaments. So, I prepared this PowerPoint that's basically by the OHSAA and their committee, and then we can discuss a little bit more about how this will affect Twinsburg. Just to give you a little bit more background, the committee's philosophy, the majority of the competitive balance committee is opposed to separate tournaments. It sounds like it goes without saying, but there were some schools who thought it was a good idea just to separate totally. When participating in OHSA tournament schools want to have, want to look at their opponents and believe that they had a reasonable chance of competing, and because of the notion that public and non-public schools are inequitable, the committee closely examined what could be the root cause. And the conclusion came, as we will see, is that where were schools getting their kids from, their rosters from? Was it kids that were coming up through their district, and in the case of a private school, were they coming up through a private school chain, maybe a feeder school, or at least that same denomination, if it was a religious affiliation? Or were they basically taking kids from an outside source, across town, kids who had never been in a private school education, and then all of a sudden, in 10th grade, decided to go to private school? So, it came down to where are these schools getting their kids from? The conclusion, besides enrollment numbers, the composition of a team's roster from where did the players come is a significant factor in affecting competitive balance. This means determining where the student's parents reside, or what educational system each student came. When a team's roster is comprised of a number of students whose parents do not reside within the school's district, or attendance zone, or the student did not come from the same system of education as that school, there may be modifications in how that team is placed in its tournament. So here are the basics of the plan. The starting point for placing the schools and their tournament divisions is the initial enrollment count, which is EMIS numbers. Those are the enrollment numbers that the principals turn in every, every year. For males and females, grades nine through 11, they're submitted to the ODE actually every other year during the even numbered years. Next, schools will submit their initial roster count, that would be something the athletic director or athletic office would do through an online system, and the team sports of football, soccer, volleyball, basketball, baseball, and softball. They purposely left off the individual team sports, or some of the team sports that a lot of schools don't have yet, lacrosse, field hockey, things like that. They want to start off with the quote-unquote more, I don't want to say popular, because that's not the right word, but more evenly populated throughout all the school districts. This will include participants in grades nine through 12 who are eligible or expected to be eligible during the season. Although submitted every year, this information from the initial roster count will be utilized the following year. The factors for public schools are dependent upon where the student's parents reside, or if the student was continuously enrolled in the district since 7th grade, again, trying to alleviate the student who transfers after a great freshman year from a school another year in the 10th grade, or whenever. The factors for non-public schools are dependent upon the school from which the student came, i.e. the feeder school, or if the student was continuously enrolled in the same system of education since the 7th grade. The Level 0 factor means that each student on a particular team's roster, meeting the criteria of the factor, will be multiplied by zero, so that number will always be zero. That's kind of where we're going to fit, we don't have open enrollment, and we are a single high school district, unlike a Parma, which we'll talk about, and I'm not singling them out, but they're a good example, they have three schools in their district. So you could live in the Normandy district, and then want to go to Valley Forge and that sort of thing, or Parma High School. The Level 4 0 factor for public schools means the parents of the student reside within the school's district, for single high schools, which is us, or designated assigned attendance zones for multiple high schools. The Level 0 factor for non-public schools means the student attended a designated assigned feeder school continuously since 7th grade. Those feeder schools have not been assigned yet, there's a lot of details to work out, but each private school will have to come up with a public school, or a feeder school, a school near them, or where they get, they think the majority of their kids, that will be their feeder school, and basically serve as their school system. The Level 1 factor means each student on a particular team's roster, meeting the criteria of the factor, will be multiplied by one. The Level 1 factor for public districts with a single high school means the student's parents reside outside the school district, but the student was continuously enrolled in the school district since 7th grade. Again, not us, we don't have open enrollment, but what they're saying is, hey, you've been in that district, even though you don't live in that area. The Level 1 factor for public districts with multiple high school means the student's parents reside within the school district, but do not reside within the school's designated attendance zone, or the student's parents reside outside the school's designated attendance zone or the school district, but the student was continuously enrolled in the school district since 7th grade. Again, using Parma, they've always gone to Valley Forge or a feeder school of Valley Forge, even though they live in the Normandy area, district. The Level 1 factor for non-public schools means the student attended the same system of education, in whatever example you want to say, Catholic, they went to, they were in Catholic school, but they weren't continuously, system of education continuously since 7th grade, but not attend the designated feeder school. They were in Catholic education, but they weren't in that feeder school that they are designed. And then finally, the highest number, the Level 2 sport-specific factor, means each student on a particular team's roster, meeting the criteria of the factor, will be multiplied by two, for the sport of football, five for the sports of volleyball, basketball, baseball, and softball, and six for the sport of soccer. And this means, again, for a single high school, the student's parents reside outside the school district, and the student was not continuously enrolled in the district since 7th grade. For public districts with multiple high school, the student's parents reside outside the school's designated assigned attendance zone and the school district, and the student was not continuously enrolled since 7th grade. And for non-public schools means the student did not attend the same system of education continuously since 7th grade, and therefore did not attend the designated feeder school. I know this is a lot of information, it is, can be a little bit confusing, but basically what they're saying is, is if you transfer in, haven't gone to a school, haven't been in a district, and you transfer in after 7th grade, the school is going to get socked with increased numbers. After these Level 1, 0, 1, and 2 factors have been applied, the counts generated from these factors will be added together on a sport-by-sport basis to generate an additional roster count. That number will then be added to the initial enrollment, the EMIS count, to create an adjusted enrollment account. The adjusted enrollment count will be used to determine the school's tournament division in that sport. So say Twinsburg has 25 soccer players, and another school, a private school, takes in all of these counts, they may end up with 50 soccer players, even though they have 25, because so many of them had transferred in. That's going to move them up a division, probably. And if you, we can go past the next page, which is the plan basics, because we just kind of discussed that. The anticipated effective date for this fall plan will be 2016, so it's a couple years away. This will allow for the piloting of the plan during the 15, 16 school year. They will implement all of the facets of it a year from now, but it will not count for the tournaments, it's just to see where everyone will fall. The OHSA will work with public schools within a multiple high school district to establish an attendance zone if one doesn't already exist, and the OHSA will provide help to schools with roster questions should it need. The last page is how does this affect Twinsburg? The OHSA divides its member schools into four equal divisions for all sports except football, which it has seven. And where this is going to affect people is they are equal divisions. It's not that they're going to come up with a number and say, if you have 80 football players, you're going to be Division 1. If there are X amount of schools that have over 80 football players, they're going to be Division 1, and even though you had 80 originally, you're going to drop down to Division 2, because it has to be equal for Division 1, Division 2, Division 3, and 4. So, there's no really a way of telling where anybody's going to be until all of this is done, and that's why they pushed it back a year. We are Division 2 in football, and we're Division 1 in other sports. We may fall to Division 2 in a few other sports, but otherwise, we will probably remain unaffected. I can see some of the private schools that are already large Division 2s jumping up to 1, and we are a smaller Division 1, and then they push us down in some of the other sports. Football, we're already Division 2, because they changed, and we have seven divisions. We already moved down to 2, but we're at the higher end of Division 2. So I can't see us falling enough, but nothing will surprise me. The question remains too, and I think the big thing for this whole program, which really maybe not, won't affect us, but it is interesting, is how this will affect the very large Division 1 schools, and how it will be totally implemented. If you're a huge Division 1, either private or public school, there's nowhere to go. So the ones that are dominating at the upper ends of Division 1 are still going to dominate the other ends of Division 1. The good thing, the thing that I'm happy with, is they did create a committee that they asked me to be on of six, I think, six ADs in the state of Ohio, to look at the Division 1 problem, and I'm really honored that they asked me to be on that committee, but I'll be able to share some more information about that. So, in summation, again, I'm not sure this will have a huge effect on us, I don't think anybody knows at this time how it's all going to work, but the biggest thing is we may fall to Division 2 in some sports.
Thank you.
Mark, can I summarize, just to see if I get the concept of the Level 0, Level 1, and Level 2?
Okay.
And this is going to be a really broad concept, so I just want to see if I'm catching it here. Level 0 is you live there. Level 1 is you don't live there, but you've gone to school, or you're part of that feeder system.
Right, and all of it has still to be determined.
Right, all to be determined.
That's exactly right.
And then Level 2 is you've transferred in there since the 7th grade?
Right.
Okay, that's just kind of at a high level.
After the 7th grade, right.
After the 7th.
Right.
Right, okay.
And a lot of what they've done in the past has been 9th grade oriented, for any kind of eligibility or that, if you, you can transfer in the 7th and 8th grade, it's been the 9th grade where they've really kind of gotten you, but they're moving it back now to stop shenanigans.
Now, for the transfers, what if somebody is moving from another state? I assume things like that were considered, do you remember how that works?
Yeah, but that won't, as long as they're going to live in your district, you're going to be okay.
But I mean, if somebody moved from Florida to Twinsburg, Ohio in the 10th grade, I mean, how does that affect us? Is it minuscule that it's not going to change anything?
Yeah, yeah, right, and it shouldn't affect these numbers hardly at all. It has to do, that kind of stuff has to do with being eligible right away. If you transfer now, you have to sit 50% of the games and that sort of thing. And the parents have to jump through a lot of hoops to prove residency, and that's, that will happen here too, is just the proof of residency, if people move. The other aspect to me that is a little concerning is who's going to do all of this? I can turn the numbers in, but who's going to prove that either I'm telling the truth or anyone else is telling the truth? The OHSA has assured people that they will have staff to do that, but that's a big job for hundreds and hundreds of schools. So, that's a concern to me, and just sitting at meetings, that would be the big thing, is when they talked about, we're going to turn our numbers in, everyone would turn over and go, yeah, but who's going to check it?
Right.
So.
And we're under, and they're not going to pilot this for another two years, was there any indication?
Well, they'll pilot it a year from now, but it won't go into the implementation for two.
And is there any indication what they might do with other sports, being that they're doing just certain sports now, going to wait to see that pilot?
Yeah.
Or would they pilot those other sports, or just say we get?
No, I think they're going to implement this for a little while.
So 2016?
Right. And truth be told, some of these other sports, people aren't really transferring for necessarily. They can, but it's not enough of an impact when not everybody has field hockey, you know, and I don't think, I also think that they don't want to start penalizing people if Twinsburg doesn't have field hockey, and they transfer to a school that does, they don't want to penalize them for it, they want to play field hockey. So maybe they move to do it, you know, they don't want to penalize them for that.
When they talk about the assigned or designated feeder school, and we're talking about the non-public schools having an assigned or designated feeder school, are the feeder schools going to be public schools that are identified as the feeder schools to that non-public school?
No, it would have to be a private school.
Okay. It's not like Twinsburg is going to be identified as a feeder school for a particular private school because they're nearby?
No.
Okay.
No, no, just the opposite to not have that happen. They would identify a private school, and it might be to where, where they get a majority of their kids, they may look at just percentages and say, you're getting 38% of your kids here, it's the biggest number, that's going to be your feeder school. And I don't think it's been determined whether the OHSA will assign it, or a, the school will just say, here's, here's our numbers, and this is what we'd like. I don't think they've answered that yet.
Go ahead, no, you go.
No, I'm just trying to understand, I understand what they're trying to accomplish, I'm not sure I'm understanding if it's going to accomplish. So my confusion is, is, okay, and I'm just going to use like a St. Ed's for an example, but they're, they're such a large, a wrestling program, so if they're recruiting wrestlers from public schools, what you're saying is, is they're going to, you know, it's going to be a higher, they're going to have to count one student for two or three, or whatever it might be, but aren't most of those schools already Division 1, or?
That's, that's the problem, and that's why they set up this committee that I'm going to be on, is because they, there's nowhere for them to go. And so, the biggest issue with this is the And so the biggest issue with this is the biggest Division Ones, there's not really no, I don't want to even say penalty, because this isn't to penalize, but there's no leveling of that playing field.
Right.
What this is going to affect is the bigger Division Two or smaller non-public schools having to move up and now compete with St. Ed's, because they're getting a lot of their kids to transfer in from different districts. But this won't have any effect on the really big Division Ones, public or non-public. And that, they've admitted, the OHSA has admitted, this is the biggest flaw in this, and that's why they're going to create this committee to see how to fix that aspect of it.
And dividing parochial or private from public has been determined that's not going to happen. They've already?
As of right now, yeah, this passed, and this is what they're going to do. And there was a lot of concerns with that, because if you do divide the tournaments, and not everyone is old enough to remember like the AFL and the NFL back in the 60s, or when the USFL started in, in, in the 80s in football, well, one of them's going to be a major league, and one's going to be a minor league if that happens. Somebody's going to have better teams than the other one. And that's their big concern, is it's going to put somebody out of business athletically. And so that was why they thought this was really the big, a big thing that needed to get passed in order to keep them together. You, we're talking about living documents. I think this is going to be a living document, too. They got it passed, and now they have something to work with, and these rules are going to change. Sometimes that scares me, because they also haven't really determined who's going to change them. I think some of them will have to be a vote, and others are just going to be committees, to where we all live by what a few people think. But this is going to be altered a lot over the years, and that's why they're piloting and not even using the numbers right away, because they're not sure how it's going to work.
How large is that committee that's looking at the Division One issue?
I believe there's six of us, is what I was told, but it might be, there, maybe there's a few more, because when I was told there was six, I was given the names, and then someone else told me they were on it, too, who weren't a part of the original six. So I'm thinking maybe they added a few more.
Six across the state, or six in our Northeast region?
Six in the across the state.
Okay. Well, I would like to say, thank you. I don't know if congratulations is the right word to say. But I think it's wonderful that, that we have your eyes and ears as a part of that committee, that, and, and if it's only six, I was, I was going to use the word influence in terms of the influence that we might have. I mean, if that was a huge committee of 50 people, you know, you're one out of 50.
No, it, it won't be that at all. If it's been, if it's been, it's bigger than six, it's probably not going to be more than 12.
And I think the good thing for, for us is that that means that the network here locally, that you have established as an athletic director, they will be looking to you, and, and I know that means that your discussions with other athletic directors is going to rise here in, in the next year, and then your, uh, uh, knowledge of what's going on at the state level will be firsthand, which is a bonus for, for us.
Absolutely. It was a big honor that they asked me, and again, I think I say it every time I, I present to you folks, but it's just such an honor to represent Twinsburg and things such as that. Just really makes me proud, so thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Thank you very much for the update. Okay, that's all the administrative reports. Mrs. Powers, anything else before I move on in the agenda?
No, that's it for tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We are now moving to remonstrance. I do not have any blue cards this evening, but if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to address the board, seeing none. We do have need for an executive session this evening. It's not in the agenda, but I would like to make a motion that the board move into executive session at 8:25 PM. We do have an issue to discuss regarding personnel, and then we will come back and reconvene and address the action items that are in the agenda. Is there a second for that motion to move to executive session?
A second.
A second by, okay, we'll go with Mr. Earl Waldron. And roll call, please.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 5-0. We will return after this and conduct the rest of the meeting and take care of the action items. 5:00 PM. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Stuber?
I'm here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Here.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Here.
Okay. We'll pick up where we left off in our agenda. We are now at item H, which is the Treasurer's Report and Recommendations. I will read these five together, Consent Agenda, without objection from my colleagues, and then I will ask Mr. Aho just to provide a few brief comments during discussion. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, the special meeting of June 3, 2014, and the regular meeting of June 4, 2014, as sent to the board under separate cover. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the final amended appropriations for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, as sent to the board under separate cover. H3, that the Board of Education approves the temporary appropriations for the fiscal year 2015 at an amount not to exceed estimated revenues on the official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2015. Grant funds shall be appropriated in the amount equal to the remaining funds for the particular grant and the amounts approved for the next grant year. This was sent to the board under separate cover. H4, that the Board of Education approves the amended certificate of estimated resources for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, also sent to the board under separate cover. And item H5, that the Board of Education, in order to provide for the prompt and efficient execution of fiscal affairs for the year ending June 30, 2014, authorizes the Treasurer to perform transfers sufficient to cover the amount of the special revenue and the grant funds, which is under ORC 3315.20, and that the unencumbered balance in the school district's general fund is greater than the aggregate required amounts in the school district's special grant funds. Is there a motion for these five agenda items, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Mr. Aho, I'll let you kind of just give a summary about the appropriations, which are our updated budget and our new budget for the next year, and then the transfers.
All righty. Part of the budgetary process really kind of starts back in January. Starts with our little budget hearing kind of thing. That's where the, the county sets the amounts and rates. So basically, the whole idea is that this process is set so that political subdivisions can't spend money they don't have. Only the federal government can do that. So whenever you hear someone said that we balanced our budget, well, you have to do that by law unless you're the federal government. Every township, town, city, school district has to balance their budget. And this, this is basically the vehicle that forces you to do that. So starting off, you have your estimated resources, so that's basically, uh, from, comes from the county, tells you how much dollars they figure they're going to collect on real estate taxes or, or such things like that. And that's your upper limit. Then you set your appropriations, and that's kind of your spending authority, so you can spend up to that. And that's what you do your purchase orders off of. So your purchase orders draw down the numbers off the appropriations, and those dollars are spent as appropriate. So at year end, you have to make some adjustments, up and down a little bit, you know, spend more over here and less over there. So it all kind of moves around a little bit, and, and at year end, we have to kind of finalize those numbers. Those numbers then are, then audited by the state auditors when they come in. They look at that stuff, they do their budgetary, it's all, you know, under Ohio Revised Code, all this budgetary compliance that they do. So they set up these big spreadsheets. I used to do that when I was an auditor. You set up the big spreadsheets, and you put all the numbers in, and you see, you know, if anything doesn't match up. One of the things we do also in the budgetary process is we made a couple of transfers. When we have federal grants, we tend to spend the money before, and then we ask for the reimbursement on the money. The federal government does not want to be sending out money that is not being spent right away. They have limits, so you can only get up to like 10% of, of the budget. So usually, you're spending the money and you're asking for it, so it kind of rolls pretty quick. At year end, you have to have all of your requests in early, so then you're spending money, and kind of by year end, you hit a deficit point. So we did some transfers. We transferred some money into our Special Ed 6B account. We transferred $179,000 into that one. And then in the target one, we transferred $64,000 into that one. Some of that also covers outstanding purchase orders. You can't request that the, the OD send you the money on a purchase order. They only send you money on expenditure. So it's part of why we had to do the transfers. We're not really at a negative balance dollar-wise, but we're on a negative balance when you add in all the, the purchase orders that are there. So all those monies have to be spent and liquidated and all that by September, so it's kind of confusing a little bit with federal grants. Their, their year runs, you know, through the end of September, so it's not, it doesn't match up exactly with the school fiscal year. So that's all part of our appropriations and our budgetary process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Aho? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those five items pass 5-0. Next on the agenda are the action items under Personnel. This is Agenda Item I. I would like to act on one, two and three, and we will act on I4 separately. Action Item I1, that the Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit I1, as per the dates, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit I2, as per the dates, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And Action Item I3, that the Board of Education approves the revised classified recall list as per the attached Exhibit I3. Is there a motion for these three agenda items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Felber. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms., Mrs. Davis. Any discussion on these first three, one, two and three?
If I can just explain?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like there's just a phenomenal amount of recommendations for the classified staff. And if you look closely at all of those, or the majority of those recommendations, Board of Education, they're primarily out of our Transportation Department. Transportation, the bus drivers and other folks that work for transportation are contracted for, I think it's 193 days a year. And so when we need them to drive special routes to, say, students who are outplaced for extended school year services, Special Ed students, we have to get their approval for their additional hours. In addition to that, this is the time of the year when all of our fleet, all of our school buses have to go through an inspection by the State Highway Patrol. Before the buses are seen by the patrol officers, they're power washed, they're painted, the seats are repaired. So there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to make sure our buses are ready to roll come August 20. So most of what you see here, it looks like a lot of work, and many of the things noted are, are here, but in order for the, these employees to be able to actually work those hours, Mr. Lenzel, Mr. Welker, or myself will have to have preapproval moving forward. So we do have a system of checks and balances. I don't want you to think it's an open check, but there's, there's a lot of checks and balances behind this. But there, again, back to my comments from before, a lot, a lot is happening in the district this time of the year, primarily at Transportation, as we're redding the buses for next school year. The other thing I wanted to mention is the recall list is being revised, has been revised, and I'm requesting your approval. As you know, unfortunately, Judy Lefler is, is going to be retired, to, I think yesterday was her very last day at Vessel. And because of that, we were able to recall Nancy Drelling. Mrs. Drelling was reduced in staff two years ago during the Operational Change Plan. She's the last remaining secretary on the list. So with Mrs. Lefler's retirement, we recalled Mrs. Drelling, and that's the reason that's coming back to, to you again for approval. I just wanted to be transparent with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those items pass 5-0. Next on the list there is Action Item I4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit I4, as per the dates, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell. A second, please.
Yes, second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
I, I have one note. I have a professional relationship with one of the people on the supplemental list, so I will be abstaining from this vote.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Abstain.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
I'll abstain as well.
Mr. Stuber?
Okay, that agenda item passes three yes and two abstain. Moving on to action items under New Business. Some of these we're going to act on separately, so I will read them separately. The first one is Action Item J1. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the bid proposal from White House Construction of Bedford Heights, Ohio, for the construction of trophy cases at the Twinsburg High School in the amount of $46,300. Construction to commence upon completion of the signed contract. This project is a joint venture between the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters and the Twinsburg City School District, and will be paid using permanent improvement funds from the school district. Is there a motion for this agenda item?
So moved.
Ms. Kane Criswell with the motion, a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Earl Waldron. And I think it's appropriate just to note that it does state here that it's a joint venture, and Mrs. Powers, I believe it's a 50%, 50%. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I will just say thank you to the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, and look to Kathy to fill in some of the blanks, because I know you're close to this one.
Yes. TAB has been working on this project for a couple of years. They have been and are currently selling bricks that will be put into this project. It is a trophy case that will be outside of the gymnasium at THS, and if you purchase a brick, those bricks will, you can have engraved your name, and those will be incorporated into the structure themselves. We have our Hall of Fame, which houses plaques from people that have had success here at, in our Twinsburg City School District. And it's, it's a really nice thing. I think it's going to be a beautiful structure. I think it's going to be nice for people that have graduated to be able to come back I think it's going to be nice for people that have graduated to be able to come back and look at, as well as to keep, you know, a nice remembrance of some of our very strong athletes. So I'm looking forward to it happening, and I know TAB will be delighted if this passes tonight.
I think it's a good motivator for some of the athletes, too.
Absolutely.
Well, I did want to highlight that, especially for TAB, and to let you comment, Kathy, because I know that, you know, TAB, the volunteers there, yourself, you guys have been working hard on this one for quite a while. So I'm glad that we finally did get this one on the agenda tonight. Thank you. Is there anything else on this one? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Trel Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And that action item passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is under New Business, Action Item J-2. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the revised administrative personnel salary schedule with a 1.5% increase to the base salary at $66,538.33 as per the attached Exhibit J-2. Is there a motion for this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Felber. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. This particular item, I will just highlight that some years ago, just as we were entering the pre-phases of the Operational Change Plan, when the district underwent a lot of financial changes, the administrative staff, both the administrative personnel staff that are listed in J-2, and then also the central office staff that are listed in J-3, experienced a wage freeze. And they were the first ones in the district of all of our groups to experience that wage freeze, and they've had a base wage freeze for, I think it was the last three years. We've, I think as Mr. Aho showed in his pictures, the ship was listing a little bit. We've got it stable now, and I think it is very appropriate for the sake of the staff that we consider this a particular agenda item tonight. Is there any other discussion anybody would like to add to this one? Mrs. Powers?
Mr. Stuber, just for the sake of the community, please note that this does not include my position on the salary schedule. This is the administrative team minus the superintendent.
Right, very good. Yes, your contract is separate from this one.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Powers.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, before we vote, I've looked at this increase, and I will just express that I do have a little bit of concern giving raises at this point, and I'm just not comfortable with giving them at this time, because we still are, you know, incurring fees for academics and things like that. So my concern is that we have to give to the students first, and I wish we had millions and millions of dollars, but I am a little bit concerned giving raises, and I think our administrative staff does an amazing job. And like I said, I wish we could do this, but for me, I'm just not comfortable at this time.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Trel Waldron?
No.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Okay. Item J-2 passes with a 4-1 vote. Next on the agenda is J-3. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the revised central office salary schedule with a 1.5% increase to the base salary for each classification as per the attached Exhibit J-3. Is there a motion for this particular agenda item, J-3?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Again, I already said everything on this one before. The administrative staff is not represented by a collective bargaining unit. So we have the TSS group, which is the support staff. We have the TEA, which is the teachers, and then we have administrative staff. And these two agenda items break up the licensed administrators, if you will, from the clerical staff, in this case, the central office staff. So I just wanted to highlight what the differences are between these. Any other discussion on J-3? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Trel Waldron?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Okay, that agenda item passes 4-1. Action Item J-4. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the psychologists and athletic trainer salary schedule as per the attached Exhibit J-4. Is there a motion for this agenda item, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. This one is a document that has needed to exist. It simply memorializes or documents the precedent that we have been following for these particular individuals. So we needed to make sure that we cleaned this up, and I would like to give credit, this is just more of the improvements that Mrs. Powers is doing. She has an HR background, so it's just things that Mrs. Powers is finding that we're cleaning up and making more solid, if you will, in the district. Any other comments on J-4? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Trel Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. That agenda item passes 5-0. Mrs. Powers?
Before we proceed, and I think there just needs to be clarification on 4, because the vote confuses me. When we are adopting this particular item, J-4, that memorializes salaries as they are, but it was with the intent to add 1.5% on their salaries.
Correct.
So not to dispute the vote here, but Mrs. Trel Waldron voted no on the other two classifications for the 1.5% increases on the base, but she's now approved the 1.5% increase for the psych and the athletic trainer. I just want to make sure that that is what, she understands what she just did.
I was doing the actual schedule. It's already approved that we're giving the raise, correct?
The Board...
The 1.5% is built into this schedule that...
Right, and we already approved the raises, so I'm just approving the...
Not for this group. They belong to the same group as the administrators, and the, they just were never included in their schedules. So you've just provided those individuals, the psychs and the athletic trainer, with the 1.5%.
I was approving the schedule that we, the Board already approved the increase. I can't take away the, this is the, this is what we're going to use. The Board already approved the increase, correct?
And Item J-2?
Nope. It's a different schedule. It's an exhibit.
And J-4?
J-4 is a different exhibit than J-3 because of the positions those individuals hold. So I just want to be clear. Mrs. Trel Waldron made the comment that she didn't want to provide increases in salaries. She just did that.
Understood.
So I'm just putting it out there, so we're transparent what we've just done.
Right, and I'm under the impression that we approved the increase by 1.5%. I'm agreeing if that we've increased, then I agree to this schedule.
I think you're misunderstanding. They didn't sit on anybody's schedule. So we are establishing a schedule for them in J-4.
J-4.
But they were still being paid, so we took their pay and built a schedule around how they've been paid.
Which includes...
And because the intent, my intent to recommend the 1.5 was built into the schedule that was just approved under J-4, which now includes the fact that those individuals that are covered under that salary schedule have been given a 1.5% increase on the base.
That's correct.
So you've said two different things here, Mrs. Trel Waldron, by your vote. So I just want to be clear to the community what you've done.
Okay, I'm under the impression that this is the schedule that we're approving.
Right.
The exhibit.
Which includes a 1.5% on the base.
Which the Board's already approved. Or we haven't approved the increase.
No, it's a separate, it's a separate one.
It's unique, it's different in from the J-2.
So J-2...
So what you're saying is you've separated, so if we don't approve this, then the trainer and psychologist do not get a raise.
You all just approved it, but my point was, you said you didn't want to give raises, but you just did.
So just to clarify, and I see where the confusion is, this raise in J-4 was not in J-2. So J-4 stood on its own. That's all.
Understood, and I'm pretty sure I understand that. We, the Board has approved it, and now the question in place is, is this the, since it's approved, this is the schedule we will use?
Right, right. And just pointing out that J-4 is a separate schedule for those two particular items.
And I respect that. My colleagues, you guys approved it, and that's great, and this is the schedule we're going to use. So I approve the schedule that we are, as a Board, going to adopt.
Okay.
So I respect that.
But I guess I'm confused, because that's not what you said.
Well, yeah, because I think this is one schedule, right? And this is a second schedule, right?
Right.
This one, we're not only approving a raise, we're approving the documentation.
Right.
Right, and Marty and I talked about how to present this to the Board. There never was a document that memorialized the salary schedules of psychs and the athletic trainer. So step one was to memorialize it on a schedule.
Right.
But because also J-3 and J-2 are showing the increase to the base, so did this new document. So I'm just trying to be transparent, because Mrs. Trel Waldron voted no on the administrative increases and the central office personnel, but she's just voted yes on raises for school psychs and the athletic trainer.
Yeah, so this stands alone.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to be transparent, so you can't say you're not approving raises because you just did. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and I will vote no.
Point of order, I think we've already recorded a vote.
Okay, I mean, I'm approving this document because we already approved raises, and I understand my decision is not a popular one amongst the Board, but I, like I said, I think at this point, if, for me, on a personal, as a Board member, I feel that I would like to see some relief given to our community and our students before we give raises. And I absolutely agree that our staff does an amazing job. But that's where I'm at with this, and I respect your opinions, and I would appreciate you respect mine.
I'm just trying to clarify confusion by what you said. And that's why I'm bringing it forward, because what you said is not what you just did.
I think we've got it, so, and Kathy, you're right. It's a separate item, and understood, and I think you understand that as well. We're understood.
Yes, understood.
Very good. All right. The next action items that we will take together are Action Items J-5 through J-13. Without objection from my colleagues, I would like to read those together in consent agenda. Action Item J-5. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the first reading of the following revised Board of Education policies. These policies are listed in the agenda and were previously summarized by Mr. Felber during the Policy Committee. Action Item J-6. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the new, in lieu of transportation reimbursement rates for the 2013-2014 school year per the Ohio Department of Education Pupil Transportation Office. The minimum amount for the 2013-2014 full school year as specified is $250. Action Item J-7. Resolve to approve the revised 2014-2015 academic calendar, which includes the ODE-approved dates for the two instructional waiver days. The dates of Friday, August 29, 2014, and Friday, October 3, 2014, will be non-student days, as the staff will participate in professional development as approved through the ODE's Innovative Education Pilot Program. This is documented in Exhibit J-7. J-8. That the Board of Education approves the insurance rates for the 2014-2015 school year through the Ohio Schools Council in the amount of $144,608, which is an increase of 3.3% over the rates from the previous year, 2013-2014, as per the attached Exhibit J-8. J-9. That the Board of Education approves the proposal for overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Contemporary Issues class to travel to Cincinnati, Ohio on October 23 and 24, 2014, to visit the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center and related sites. This trip will be paid for by the students, and was, the request was sent to the Board under separate cover. J-10. That the Board of Education approves a student affiliation agreement with Kent State University for the 2014-2015 school year, renewable for one-year periods up to a total of five years for the Kent State University students completing clinical rotations or internships as a part of the athletic training program within the School of Health Services. This agreement was sent to the Board under separate cover. Item J-11. That the Board of Education approves a contract with DeJong Richtner of Dublin, Ohio, for subdivision and build-out analysis services regarding enrollment projections. The total of this contract is not to exceed $20,900. This is a general funded expense and was sent to the Board under separate cover. Item J-12. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the following list of books to be deleted from inventory. Those books are listed in the agenda. Item J-13. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the Director of Human Resources and Director of Business Services as this Twinsburg City School District's anti-harassment compliance officers, effective August 1, 2014. Is there a motion for these agenda items, which again include J-5 through J-13? Moved by Mrs. Davis. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Any discussion on these items? Mrs. Powers, anything that you would like to clarify for us?
Well, first and foremost is the change to the academic calendar, which is under J-7. At the last board meeting, the Board of Education approved the proposal to the ODE to provide two waiver days, and just as we've had in the years past, these instructional waiver days will be used for professional development. They are non-student report days. We will make sure that we put this out on the website tomorrow, so that parents can begin to plan. Purposely built on two Fridays, because we understand it might be a little easier for our families. October 3 is also a Jewish holiday, so we thought that might be helpful to our tigers who happen to be of that religious denomination. So that's important to note. The other thing is the fact that we do have, on number J-11, services with DeJong Richter, Board of Education, as you know, we have a district goal regarding production of student enrollment. There has been a lot of talk in our community of the fact that there happens to be a lot of building going on, and what will that mean for the school district? And so this will be a very intensive study, the build-out study. We were able to negotiate a much cheaper contract than I originally thought, and so we're very delighted that this architectural firm is willing to do that for us. We already sent a lot of data to them, and with your approval this evening, they will get going with their contract. And finally, J-13 is actually in response to what Mr. Felber and Mrs. Davis worked on yesterday with issues around harassment and the fact that currently only Mrs. McKinney, as Director of Human Resources, is noted in policy as the compliance officer. And knowing that sometimes there are sensitive gender-based issues that might come forward, the Board had the smart decision here, they, this was on Mr. Felber and Mrs. Davis, they saw this, they said, well, we should divide it and have two, and so Mr. Welker now has to approve it and be the male compliance officer. So I didn't even tell him this was coming, so he's seeing this for the first time. That's great. That's all I have. Thank you.
I had one question on J-10. I think it's a great program with Kent State, just the way the language is written. Do they have to come back? Or do, you know, does this come before the Board every one-year option? Or are we approving it that it can be approved up to five years?
They would send me the contract to renew it next year, and you're moving forward...
We're giving you the authority.
And up to five years, you will have been giving me the authority to sign. Mr. Shear, Mike Shear, our trainer, has worked with Kent State for many years, bringing students who needs to do their clinical hours and internship as a student athletic trainer individual, and I understand is a new dean in the college. And the new dean is very, very specific about contract language, so he wants to protect us, and he wants to protect Kent State. Therefore, that's why we're seeing this come forward at this point.
That's a good point. I missed it in my first read of the agenda. I just want to clarify the nuance of one-year, five-year. I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Trel Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Those items pass 5-0. The last item on the agenda tonight is J-14. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Lesko Associates of Cleveland, Ohio, for architectural services including schematic design, design development, construction documents, assistance in obtaining bids or negotiated proposals in awarding and preparing construction contracts, and construction oversight for the paving replacement projects at RB Chamberlain Middle School, the Twinsburg Board of Education, and Wilcox Primary. The total of this contract is not to exceed $25,000. The fee is to be paid out of the permanent improvement fund. Is there a motion for this agenda item, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell. A second, please.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Buildings and grounds, maybe you guys want to comment on this one? Paving projects? Pretty common stuff we need to...
I just, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I just think it's important that we're keeping the lots paved and crack-free, especially at the elementary schools. I know RB Chamberlain doesn't necessarily have recess out on the playground, but it is used from the community for a lot of different things, and so it gets a lot of usage for parking, and so I think liability-wise, it's important that we're keeping that in extremely good repair, as well as Wilcox. I know that it had quite a bit of cracking and things like that, so I think this is great that we're moving forward with getting these projects done. We use Wilcox Parking Lot for a playground, and the last thing we want is a child to fall down because there's a huge gap or crack. So I think this is a good thing happening, and I think this will be good for our kids and good for our community.
Anything else?
In order of completion, if this all goes through this evening and the contract is approved and we move forward with the project, then we would have the intention of doing the Wilcox Playground first. One of the reasons for that is because we are reconfiguring the pickup plan. Mrs. Davis was very instrumental in us making some decisions about how to change that pickup program at Wilcox. So that playground needs to be done, so that Miss Villa's reconfigured plan will work, you know, without a problem come the beginning of the school year. So that'll go first, then we'll do R B C, and then the board office will be last. That's the intention of Mr. Lenzel and Mr. Welker, so just wanted to...
Thank you. Roll call please. Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Trel Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
That last item passes five oh. We're now to Ms. Lanius, does anyone have anything in general?
I've already put it out through other channels, but I too would like to congratulate the Taste of Twinsburg, the volunteers, and everybody behind it, it was a phenomenal event. Thousands of people, I know the weather had a lot to play, it's nice that a lot of the funds were raised for pause on hunger, but there was a tremendous community effort that went into that, and I just wanted to use this other channel to commend them and congratulate them on a very well-attended event, and Anthony, you know, singing, certainly, you know, made a couple tiger parents proud, and it was nice to see, and there's, I believe, another benefit concert, July twelfth, might miss?
July twelfth. Yes, actually a free concert by Anthony on the square.
Free concert.
Thanks to Twinsburg Township's trustees.